Good morning, everyone. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Andy Hunthausen, and I welcome you to our Thursday morning meeting, the nineteenth of September, the Board of County Commissioners. To my left is Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
To Tom's left is Brandy Spangler. She'll be taking care of us today. Thank you, Brandy. Sometimes it's like herding cats, I know. Thank you very much. And to my right will be Commissioner Candace Payne. I think she got caught up in the hallway there. She'll be here in a minute. And over here we have Deputy County Attorneys Nico Hash and Keegan Shea. Good morning, gentlemen. Roger Baltz, our Chief Administrative Officer. Want to remind everyone that there is a sign-up sheet in the front, as well as agendas. Please sign in prior to leaving today so we have a good record of who's attended our public meeting. We're going to start off with a proclamation today, and I'll invite Sherri Jones up from the League of Women Voters Helena. And this happens to be Voter Registration Week, we're calling it. I think the official day was the seventeenth, but the week is, we're going to say this week in Lewis and Clark County, we want to highlight folks making sure they get registered to vote and prepare for the upcoming elections. So I'll turn it over to you. Sherri, welcome if you'd introduce yourself for the record, and you're welcome to say a few words and then read the proclamation if you'd like.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Sherri Jones. I'm here on behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Helena area. And the proclamation today is to celebrate Voter Registration Week. We just had an entire crew out yesterday throughout the city and the county to register voters. Whereas voting is the foremost right and responsibility of citizens of the United States of America, and whereas active and engaged citizens, regardless of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation, are the foundation of democracy, and whereas for any democracy to work, all eligible citizens must be able to vote for their representatives without barriers in free and fair elections. And whereas the hallmark of good citizenship is community participation, including informed voting in every election in which a ballot is received. And whereas good citizenship includes respecting other points of view, keeping an open mind and taking care of one another. And whereas a thriving democracy includes governments that are open, transparent, inclusive, and equitable. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Lewis and Clark County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of September sixteen through September twenty, 2024, as Voter Registration Week in Lewis and Clark County. Citizens are encouraged to remind friends and family to vote. We join the League of Women Voters of the Helena area in reminding citizens to check their voter registration at myvoterpagemt.com to ensure they are ready and able to vote in the upcoming election. Dated this nineteenth day of September, 2024.
Thank you very much, and a very important week. Commissioners, anything you'd like to add? If not, we would invite you to come around. We'll get a picture with you if you'd like. We'll stand right out here.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you. Thank you for helping us. We appreciate it.
And that is yours to keep.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. We're moving on. We next have consent action items. Mr. Baltz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. You have three consent, or six consent items to consider today. The first is item three A, Resolution two zero two four dash one oh three, declaring county property to be surplus property, and staff recommends approval of that item. Next, you have item three B, Resolution two zero two four dash one oh four, declaring county property surplus property. Staff recommends approval of that item. Item three C is Fiscal Year 2025 Memorandum of Understanding Between Lewis and Clark County and Montana Stock Growers Association. Staff recommends approval of that item. Item three D is Fiscal Year 2025 Memorandum of Understanding Between Lewis and Clark County and Montana Wool Growers Association, and staff recommends approval of that item. Item three E is Fiscal Year 2025 Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification. Staff recommends approval of that item. And the last item, Commissioners, is item three F, which is a letter of support for City of Helena grant application to the Federal Railroad Administration, and staff recommends approval of that item. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? How about public comment on any of the consent action items? Public comment? Public comment? Hearing none, Commissioners, there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent action items three A, three B, three C, three D, three E, and three F as presented by Mr. Baltz.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent action items as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we're on to item number four on the agenda, which is a bid opening for the Lower D2 Ditch Flood Mitigation Project. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Dan Carlin, County Engineer, for the record. Today, we're doing a bid opening for the Lower D2 Flood Mitigation Project. As you may recall, we have previously awarded the supply of the culverts for this project, a previous bid award. This is the installation work of those culverts. We have a base bid, which is six of the culverts, which is followed on by two additive alternates if we have the funding available to do so. So I will be reading the base bid plus each additive alternate. Thank you. All right. So first bid we have is from Montana Civil Contractors out of Belgrade, Montana. We appear to have a bid bond. They also appear to have the certification sheet completed correctly. And they have acknowledged the addendum. So for the base bid, we have a base bid price of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and no cents. Additive alternate one price, excuse me, of one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, nine hundred dollars, zero cents. Additive alternate number two of eighty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars and zero cents. All right, our second bid is from CK May Excavating out of Belgrade, Montana.
Say that again.
CK. C K. Charlie Kilo. We have the addendum acknowledged. We have a appears to be complete certification page and bid bond. And bid form completed. For this, for their bid, they have a base bid of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars and no cents. Additive alternate one price of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars and zero cents. And a additive alternate number two price of one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars and zero cents. I forgot to mention, we have seven bids, which is actually quite rare. We don't typically get that many. So very excited that we had this much interest. This third bid is from Helena Sand and Gravel out of Helena, Montana. Right, they have a, what appears to be a complete bid bond and certification page, as well as acknowledgement of addendum. They have a base bid price of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars and zero cents. An additive alternate price of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and zero cents. And an additive alternate two price of one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and zero cents. All right. The fourth bid is from Vosler Excavating Incorporated out of Jefferson City. Right, they have a, what appears to be complete bid bond and certification page and have acknowledged the addendum. They have submitted a base bid of five hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and ten cents. A additive alternate one price of seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and zero cents. And a additive alternate two of eighty thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and zero cents. This fifth bid is from Gregory Construction out of Mims, Florida. I'm seeing a quizzical look, and I'll address that once I've read this one. It's over an envelope. They have what appears to be a complete bid bond and certification sheet, as well as acknowledgement of the addendum. They have submitted a base bid price of one million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and zero cents. A additive alternate one price of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and zero cents. And a additive alternate two price of two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. So this particular company was at our pre-bid conference, and they actually do have a local office here in Montana, actually located in Bozeman area. So their corporate headquarters are in Florida. This sixth bid is from Bullet Contracting out of Boulder, Montana. They have acknowledged the addendum, and they appear to have a complete certification page, as well as have included a bid bond. That appears to be complete. They have submitted a base bid price of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and zero cents. A additive alternate one price of one hundred and eighteen thousand, fifteen dollars and zero cents. And an additive alternate two price of eighty-two thousand dollars and zero cents. All right, and the last one. Our final bid is from Missouri River Contractors out of Helena, Montana. All right, they appear to have a complete certification page and bid bond and have acknowledged the addendum. They have submitted a base bid price of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and zero cents. An additive alternate one price of one hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. And an additive alternate two price of eighty-nine thousand, thirty-four dollars and zero cents. And that completes the amount of bids we have, and we would like to take these bids under advisement, give them a thorough review, and come back before the board on October third for a recommendation.
October third. All right, Commissioners, prior to taking any action on this, just an explanation for those that might be watching today. And this was, it was great to get so many bids, but we open all of our bids in public. And the reason we do not make a decision today, like, oh geez, let's just pick the cheapest one, for example. We make sure that those bids meet all of our specs. They meet state law. They are all in proper order. And a quick glance like this does not give us that point of information. So we ask staff to take the bids under advisement, make sure that they meet all those requirements and bring back a recommendation to us that hopefully is within our budget, but also meets all of the requirements. So we'll wait till October third to hear what your recommendation is, and we'll make a decision on that day if the commission is okay with that. And if so, I'd like to have a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move to ask the staff to analyze these seven bids and come back with a recommendation on October third.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to ask staff to take the bids under advisement and come back on October third. Prior to taking a vote on this, I'd like to ask for public comment. If there's any public comment on this item, any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none, Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floors. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is a grant award. Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Montana Public Health Institute. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Drenda Niemann. I'm the Health Officer with Lewis and Clark Public Health. Today, I have before you a grant award from the Montana, Montana Public Health Institute to Lewis and Clark Public Health for the opioid education and naloxone distribution program. This, this project is intended to reduce overdose morbidity and mortality with a focus on opioids, stimulants, and polysubstance use, utilizing evidence-based and evidence-informed interventions. As a regional hub, we work to meet the unique needs of the communities we serve, which includes the surrounding twelve counties: Lewis and Clark, Broadwater, Mar, Park, Gallatin, Madison, Beaverhead, Silver Bow, Jefferson, Deer Lodge, Granite, and Powell. We consider the context of each area and the strengths that they can build upon. We collaborate with our regional partners to increase access to overdose prevention education and increase linking people who's, who use, who use drugs to harm reduction treatment and recovery resources. We have been the regional hub for this work since April of 2023. This is, this grant award is a short-term stop grant, stopgap renewal to ensure service continuity while we wait for the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services to release the new RFP, which will result in a longer grant period for these services. In the eighteen months we've been doing this work, we have coordinated the delivery of nine hundred and forty-nine boxes of naloxone and four hundred and fifty-two fentanyl test strips. Sorry. Trained nineteen individuals on naloxone administration and coordinated monthly regional collaboration calls with our partners. The grant term is September thirtieth through November thirtieth, 2024, and the amount of the award is nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you so much. How about questions, Commissioners? Any questions? Looks like really important work, and glad that we're in the middle of it and being of assistance to these other counties as well. So thank you. All right, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, hearing no public comment. Commissioners, is there a motion, please, to approve this grant award?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Montana Public Health Institute as presented by Drenda Niemann.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Moved and seconded to approve the grant award as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners. Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next item on the agenda is a bid award for RID overlays. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Caleb Marcus. I'm the RID Construction Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County Public Works. On, before you today is the bid award for Rural Improvement District overlays. On September fifth, 2024, four bids were opened for the Rural Improvement District overlays project. The project generally consists of the installation of asphalt overlays at various levels of thickness within RIDs throughout Lewis and Clark County. The invitation to bid opened on August tenth, was advertised in the Helena Independent Record on August tenth and seventeenth, 2024, and closed at four o'clock PM on sun, on September fourth, 2024. The bid included two schedule options for the project, one for this fall and one for spring. In an effort to secure the best possible price for the project, the lowest bidder had the same unit prices for both schedules. Therefore, staff, staff determined to move forward with the fall timeframe. Funding for this project comes from individual RID funds set up for improvement work. Helena Sand and Gravel had the lowest responsive bid. After review of all bids by the selection committee, staff recommends awarding the contract to the lowest bidder, Helena Sand and Gravel, for a total contract amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-five cents, and authorize the chair to sign all applicable contract documents.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any questions, Commissioners? Any questions? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none, is there a motion, please, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I, I would move to accept, accept the recommendation of staff and award the bid as explained by Mr. Marcus.
Second. Move a seconded award the bid to Helena Sand and Gravel as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just, just a moment to thank staff for the work they're doing. These are going to, this is going to go into the RIDs or several of the RIDs we have around the county. And I just appreciate the hard work that you're doing and, and trying to make sure that people get the roads the way they want them in these special districts that they've set up in their neighborhoods.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, Mr. Commissioner. How about that? Couple more years, Mr. Chair, again. All right, any other comments? Thank you very much. With that, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you so much. Question for our audience out here. Is, is this loud enough? Can you hear okay? Barely. Is there any way to turn up this mic a little bit? I don't know if there is or not, but if there is, maybe a little bit, just for the audience. We'll try to accommodate a little bit if we can. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024 dash one oh two to levy and assess the Ryan's Lane Rural Improvement District, number 2024 dash six.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Again, Caleb Marcus with Lewis and Clark County Public Works, and I am the RID Construction Coordinator. Today is a public hearing regarding the final, final adoption of Resolution 2024 dash one oh two to levy and assess a special assessment of seventy, seven hundred and fifteen dollars for a fifteen-year debt service on benefiting properties within the Ryan's Lane Rural Improvement District. I have that outlined here. As you can see, there's Ryan's Lane and Britton's Way. It kind of comes off to the south. It's off of North Montana Avenue, north of Sierra Road, south of Lincoln Road. This assessment will be used to repay financing of district improvements. The resolution also includes an annual assessment of two hundred and sixty dollars upon benefiting properties to provide annual maintenance on these improvements. This is the third and final public hearing in the RID creation process. This district is located to the east of North Montana Avenue, just north of the Irrigation Canal and about a mile north of Sierra Road. The resolution of intention to create the Ryan's Lane RID was passed by the commission on July sixteenth, 2024, after receiving a petition signed by fifty-five point six percent of property owners within the district. This opened a thirty-day comment and protest period, and legal notice of the intention to create the district was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on July twentieth and July twenty-seventh, 2024. The comments and protest period closed on August twenty-first, 2024, with no protest received. The Ryan's Lane RID was created through public hearing by the commission on August twenty-seventh, 2024. Improvements include the installation of an asphalt apron at the transition of Ryan Lanes and Ryan's Lane and North Montana Avenue, and drainage remediation, application of new gravel material, watering, grading, and compacting of the new material throughout Ryan's Lane and Britton's Way. It'll include subbase asphalt and chip seal surfacing. The drainage on Ryan's Lane and Britton's Way and financing of the improvements is estimated to total seventy-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and each benefited property is supposed to be levied a fifteen-year debt service assessment of seven hundred and fifteen dollars per year. Maintenance funded by the proposed district includes snow removal and sanding, drainage maintenance, grading, and gravel maintain, maintenance on the gravel roads. Maintenance will also include patching, sweeping, and chip sealing on the asphalt apron between North Montana Avenue and Ryan's Lane. Funding of annual maintenance is estimated to total two thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied and maintained. and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied and maintenance, a maintenance assessment of $260 per year. Apologize. Upon passage of the resolution to create the Ryan's Lane RID, legal notice of this public hearing to levy and assess the district was mailed to all benefiting property owners and also published in the Helena Independent Record on August 31st and September 7th, 2024. As of September 18th, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of Resolution 2024-102 to levy and assess the Ryan's Lane Rural Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus, for the thorough overview. Any questions, Commissioners? Again, just to repeat, you just said it well, but this is the last step in the process. The citizens, at least 55, almost 56% of the folks there on that lane brought us a petition to create an RID, and we've been through two of the three major steps in that. This is the third step to levy and assess. Okay, and because of where we are in the, the year, this won't be on taxes until the fall of 2025, correct?
Correct, I believe so, yes.
That's my understanding. Okay, any questions, Commissioners?
Little, yeah, move that out of the ways. I can see the entire outline of the district.
Yeah, it's a fairly short stretch of road. It's not very long at all, less than a mile total, so.
Okay, so it starts from Mont, North Montana Avenue and goes over to?
Yep, goes east.
And then down to Britain's Way.
Yep, yep.
All right, thank you.
Any other question?
Just a comment of, I mean, Mr. Chair, I just really appreciate the neighbor, neighbors out there, kind of spearheaded by George Lane that wanted to improve their roads in their area. They came forward with a petition signed by over half the people, and they requested this, this work, and I think it's going to be a nice improvement for their neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 2024-102 to levy and assess the Ryan's Lane Rural Improvement District number 2024-6 as presented by Mr. Marcus.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded approved the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-105, levying assess, levying an assessment upon customers of the Lincoln Solid Waste Management District who own personal property in the district and owe an unpaid pay-as-you-throw charge for FY 2024. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. For the record, Misty Edwards, Senior Finance Coordinator in the County Finance Office. And before you this morning is a resolution to place unpaid solid waste charges on the tax bills of customers in the Lincoln Solid Waste District who own personal property in the district. Customers that exceeded their assessed cubic yard limit were mailed statements on July 11th, 2024, showing the breakdown of the charges and the amount due. Customers were advised that if their accounts had not been paid by August 15th, the charges would be added to their tax bill. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll ask one. Oh, I'll let you ask first if you'd like, Commissioner.
Misty, so this is the tax bill for personal property. Could you explain what that entails?
Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, personal property is considered mobile homes in this case.
Is that, I mean, it's not including my, my camper or my lawnmower? Those are all personal property too.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, those are personal property, but they don't receive tax bills, so it has to be on the tax bill.
And just for education purposes, this is not uncommon in that folks are encouraged and offered opportunities to pay their overture dollars as they go along, but many of them just say, oh, I'll just pay it on my taxes, and they, they essentially purposely leave it to this point and just pay it on their annual tax bill. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. Several people choose to pay it through their escrow on their tax bill. If it goes on a tax bill, it's not penalized. There's no penalty or interest, so that's the method they choose.
And it's not a surprise either. People are, are warned that they have an outstanding bill, yeah, through the year. Okay. Just wanted to make that clear for folks. Any other questions, Commissioners? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move for approve Resolution 2024-105 as explained by Ms. Edwards.
Second.
Moved and seconded approved the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-106, which is levying an assessment upon customers of the Lincoln Solid Waste Management District who own real property in the district and owe an unpaid pay-as-you-throw charge for FY 2024, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Again, for the record, Misty Edwards, Senior Finance Coordinator in the County Finance Office. Again, this is another resolution for unpaid solid waste charges in the Lincoln Solid Waste District. This one is for real property. Staff recommends approval of the resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Commissioners?
This is a little larger list that is, this is to act for actually real estate. Goes on the real estate taxes of, of these folk.
Correct. Thank you. Any comment?
Mr. Chair Commissioner Ralph, that is correct. It is a larger list, mainly because it includes businesses, and that's all real property.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, Commissioners, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-106?
Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution number 2024-106 as presented by Misty Edwards. Oop. I did that wrong. It was 105.
Um, we're on 106.
We are.
Yes.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded approved Resolution 2024-106, correct?
Correct.
All right, and we have a second. All right, how about further discussion, Commissioners? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, thank you, Edwards. We're on to item number 10 on the agenda, which is a request to proceed with modification of condition of approval for the Aerosmith subdivision. Mr. McNally, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. You'll notice on your agenda item, Ms. Rachel Ward was supposed to be with you for this item today. She is not available, and so I am going to present her item for her as well as the next two. Commissioners, Mr. Kim Smith received preliminary plot approval for the Aerosmith subdivision on November 24th, 2020, and, and the commission has subsequently granted a three-year extension for that subdivision on November 24th, 2026. This subdivision is one of four adjacent major subdivisions that the commission approved. They were reviewed concurrently. You'll see the three of them on your agenda today. One of them will be on your subsequent agenda next Tuesday. But today, the request from Mr. Smith is requesting from you to allow him to proceed with an application to modify the preliminary approval for this particular subdivision, the Aerosmith subdivision. More specifically, Mr. Smith is seeking to amend Condition Number 6B of this project, which requires the approach of Esplan Drive, which is a road that accesses North Montana. Or, sorry, this is not North Montana. Canyon Ferry Road, as shown on your screen, you can see the red circle in, is the area where these subdivisions are located, and they will be provided access to Canyon Ferry Road. Condition 6B regard, is in regard to Esplan Drive, which accesses Canyon Ferry Road, and which currently requires a three-lane approach be constructed. The applicant, as well as staff, as well as Public Works, have met with MDT, and on July 10th, the Montana Department of Transportation did provide comments at the app, to the applicant that they would prefer to see the approach remain as a two-lane approach rather than be expanded as required by the conditions of approval. And I'll just really quick give you a run-through here. So again, this is where this is located here on your screen. You can see this red dot where there's four subdivisions. All that were reviewed concurrently. This is a closer in view. These are all on four separate pieces of property. The, involve the Aerosmith subdivision, which you'll see in red, the Blacksmith subdivision, which you'll see in orange, the Coppersmith subdivision, which you'll see in green, and the Wordsmith subdivision, which you'll see in blue. Those first three, the Aerosmith, Blacksmith, and Coppersmith, I have on your agenda today, and as I indicated, the fourth one, Wordsmith, will be on your Tuesday agenda next week. The subdivision regulations adopted by the county include a provision for modifications of conditions of approval, and it involves a public hearing should an application be made. But there's a two-step process in that, and the first step is optional by the applicant, and the applicant has taken upon himself to afford himself this first option, which is to simply come forward to this commission and say, may I proceed with the request for modifications? Does it, does the request warrant consideration? And in so doing, they provide a letter, that letter's attached to your packet, in which they address three questions. What circumstances have changed? How will the applicant benefit from the change? And what impacts, both positive and negative, will they bring on neighbors, the public in general, and the surrounding environment? And as I indicated, Commissioners, the applicant has been meeting with MDT, as well as our staff, as well as Public Works staff, and has, and MDT has made a request or made a preference known that they'd prefer that this requirement for Esplan Drive to provide a third lane not be there, that they can just provide a regular two-lane approach here at this location. The applicant is present, as well as his engineer, and of course, available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McNally. Any questions for Mr. McNally right now? Okay, gentlemen, would you like to present to the commission at all anything you'd like to add? Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Kim Smith, 75, Ten Applegate. Commissioners, the, we, we feel that this, the, there were recent improvements made on Canyon Ferry Drive, and DOT built the approach, put in the drainage and everything, and also the fact that there's a turn lane in front of it, we think makes this not an unreasonable request at all to go ahead and just leave it as two lanes. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Smith? Um, could, where is, is the turning lane on Canyon Ferry Drive?
I'm sorry?
You said that it involves a turning lane. Is that on Canyon Ferry?
That is correct. There's a center turn lane on Canyon Ferry Drive when it was upgraded.
Okay, and is, so people can turn into this subdivision as well as into the one in the south?
Yeah, I mean, so they don't have to stop and stop traffic in the middle of the road, because there is a middle turn lane.
Okay.
Which used to be a request that, or at least a point of discussion with planning in the past, if you created a lot more traffic, there was times that they wanted a turn lane installed. Well, this one already has one, so I think it's pretty appropriate.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions, Commissioners?
None here.
How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, Commissioners, again, this is just a request to proceed with the modification application. Is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the request, proceed with modification of condition of approval for the Aerosmith subdivision as explained, explained by Mr. McNally and Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the request to proceed with modification as presented. Commissioners, further discussion? I just say, thank you. Thank you for bringing the information forward, and Mr. McNally, your explanation about the consultation and input by MDT. It makes sense to me to allow the application for modification and looking forward to the results of that, so. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioners?
Nope.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is to proceed with the modification of condition of approval for Coppersmith subdivision, and I'll just say before you get going there, Mr. McNally, for those that are listening and saying, why don't they just do them all at once, or why don't they, we can't. We have to take each one individually. It's part of our process and to make it official, and we would hate for us to make a decision that later got overturned because of some technicalities. We want to follow the rules best that we can to dot the i's and cross the t's, and it'll pay off in the long run. Spend a few more minutes of this. So, Mr. McNally.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Greg McNally with the Community Development Planning Department, once again, here to present a request for, to proceed with modifications of conditions of approval, this time for the Coppersmith subdivision. The Coppersmith subdivision is shown on your screen in green, are the location of it here. This is a subdivision that will utilize that same road network that's also shown on your screen, including Esplan Drive. Esplan Drive is involved in a Condition Number 6B of this particular subdivision. The applicant, Mr. Smith, is requesting that the County Commission allow him to proceed with the request to modify the preliminary approval for this Coppersmith subdivision. The condition currently requires him to expand that approach from a two-lane approach to a three-lane approach. MDT would be in favor of this approach being two-lane, as, as it currently is, and the applicant would like to modify that particular condition going forward. Again, this is the Coppersmith, Coppersmith subdivision granted preliminary approval on November 24th, 2020, which was also granted a three-year extension on November 24th, 2026. Commissioners, I know I said a little bit more in the last item, but if, if there's anything you'd like me to add more to this particular project, I'd be happy to do that. Otherwise, I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. McNally. Any questions for Mr. McNally?
No, I think the explanation has been given.
Okay, and in the opportunity, if you'd like to address the commission, you're welcome. Okay. All right, how about public comment on this item? Public comment on this item? Hearing no public comment. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman.
This is item number 11.
Thank you. I move that we approve, request to proceed with modification of condition of approval for the Coppersmith subdivision as presented by Mr. McNally and by Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Moved and seconded to approve the request to proceed with modification application. Commissioners, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next item on the agenda is request to proceed with modification of condition of approval for Blacksmith subdivision.
Good morning, Commissioners. Once again, Greg McNally with the Community Development Planning Department, here for Ms. Ward for today's item. Mr. Smith is requesting the County Commission allow him to proceed with the request to modify the preliminary approval for the Blacksmith subdivision. That is shown on your screen in orange. This subdivision also will utilize the road network that you see before you, which includes an access point on Canyon Ferry Road for Esplan Drive. This project also involves a condition of approval, Condition Number 6B, which requires the approach of Esplan Drive be expanded to a three-lane approach. The applicant has been working with MDT. MDT has indicated they prefer that to be a two-lane approach, and again, the applicant is requesting that we modify the condition of approval for this subdivision to allow a two-lane approach here at this location. The applicant has made this request, and if approved, the applicant would then proceed with actually submitting an application for modification, and we would schedule a hearing for the consideration of that modification. Commissioners, this was granted preliminary approval on November 24th, 2020, and it was also granted a three-year extension on November 24th, 2020, till November 24th, 2026. Staff has indicated that the, the applicant is here and present if you would like to ask him any questions.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? About this? Welcome to address us if you'd like. Okay. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would have moved to approve the request to proceed with modification for condition of approval for the Blacksmith subdivision as explained by Mr. McNally and Mr. Smith.
Second.
Move and second to approve the request to proceed with modification application as presented, further discussion, commissioners?
Just just one comment. I've been here three and a half years and it seems like Mr. Smith has been a a good businessman and a and a man of his word. When he needs to do something, he'll he'll come to it and talk with us about it. Um, I I just really appreciate the straightforward way that you you deal uh, in a businesslike manner with our commission. Thank you very much.
Now, second that.
And I'll third it. How about that? Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right. No, I appreciate it. And again, the reasons for moving forward with the modification application, it is clear that in consultation with the state of Montana and the approach requirements and recommendations change here is likely warranted. So we'll look at that application as it comes in. And I think supporting the um, submit submittal of an application for amendment is appropriate. Commissioners, anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. Okay. Number 13 on the agenda is an agreement to extend the preliminary subdivision approval for the Fosbender Miners subdivision.
Good morning, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I have before you a request to extend the preliminary approval for the Fosbender Miners subdivision. Uh, the applicant, Mr. Fosbender, has requested an extension of the preliminary plat for this subdivision. Preliminary plat approval was granted by the Board of County Commissioners on March 22nd, 2016 for two lots, each for one single family dwelling. One lot for common space for homeowners association, uh, which includes a manmade lake, a boat dock, a boat ramp, parking lot and a community wastewater treatment system. And commissioners, I can show on my screen if Ms. McCarty would like to pull that up for us. This project is located just north of Munger Road and adjacent to Bowie Boulevard. This would be located east of the frontage road along the interstate. Uh, this is an image of the preliminary plat, which looks pretty washed out on the screen up ahead. But I'll hopefully clear that up a little bit. Again, I spoke that there was two single family lots being created, both one in the red and one in the yellow, as well as the lot, the blue lot, which is um, the lock for the manmade lot for the manmade lake, the parking lot, boat dock and boat ramp. Um, commissioners, the lots in purple that you see are not part of this subdivision. They are part of the Waterski Mania Estates subdivision that was plotted previously. Uh, I have provided with you in this request, the applicant's application for an extension as well as a signed agreement from the applicant to extend this project for one year. That would extend it until September 22nd, 2025. Uh, commissioners, in my report, I indicate that that would, if approved, that would extend this out for eight years and six months total. Counted on my fingers incorrectly. It's nine years and six months total is would how long this would be if that were extended. We did last hear an extension request for this project in March of 2024. At that point in time, the commission granted a six month extension request for this application. And the applicant is present in the audience today. And I would note that the applicant has been working on his conditions of approval. I know there is a DEQ approval that is still outstanding. During the time of the last approximately six months, uh, it would have been fairly difficult to get that application in to DEQ because DEQ had a requirement that they've since changed that required that with the DEQ application, a predetermination letter from the DNRC be submitted for regarding water. Um, and that was something that a rule that DEQ had that they've just amended to remove because the DNRC isn't preparing anymore predetermination letters regarding water. So, um, that rule has now been lifted and removed from the DEQ requirements. So there could be an application submitted here for for DEQ. Uh, we also have talked previously before in this project about the cars that are located throughout the project. I know Mr. Fosbender has indicated on his application that a majority of those cars have been removed. I did go out on site uh, on September 6th, just to visually see that. Um, I apologize, I did not have any pictures for you today. But I did notice that I could speculate those 90% or more of those cars have been removed from from the property. Um, so it's a significant reduction there in in the amount of vehicle activity on that project. Again, we do not have criteria for our review of extensions of of projects here in our subdivision regulations. We've granted extensions that have varied from six months to five years, although most commonly you'll see a three year extension or a one year extension. And as I indicated before, uh, the last extension provided to this project was for six months. Commissioners, I'm available if you have any questions of me. And again, as I said, the applicant is present as well.
Thank you very much. Questions, commissioners? Missioner Payne.
I've got quite a bit of material here, so I hope you'll bear with me, Greg. So you addressed the conditions of approval for the the DEQ approval for water. Did um, did what is the situation with the wastewater and stormwater improvement and installation? Is there a some kind of a permit for that or is that has that been addressed?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, the DEQ approval will include both water, wastewater and stormwater. So it will include all of those things. And and no, they have not yet been addressed.
Okay, I'm a little confused here. Okay, so and I recognize that there's been a change in the law. Um, that so that I think it's the DNRC no longer has to they it is changed. So the DEQ approval for water, that is a separate issue now? Or not required or could you go back over that?
Sure, Mr. Chair Commissioner, I didn't mean to introduce any confusion. So there's a condition of approval that requires um, a DEQ application and approval for all three systems, water, wastewater and stormwater regarding a project. Uh, in in the past, in the current, well, the new the rules for DEQ used to have a requirement that with the application to the Department of Environmental Quality DEQ, uh, that there should be a predetermination letter accompanying that uh, application from the DNRC. The DNRC through their um, uh, policy decisions have indicated that they would no longer provide those predetermination letters. So that would make it difficult to receive for DEQ to receive that application and to proceed forward. So, but that rule has now been amended by the DEQ. And that requirement has been removed. So um, an application for the Department of Environmental Quality for all those things, water, wastewater and stormwater can now be submitted to to them.
It can be submitted to the Department of Environmental Quality?
Correct, they'll have to review that and uh, and then issue an approval letter.
And do we know, has that been submitted?
I am not aware that it has been. If the applicant has any information about that, he can speak to them.
I will ask him. Thank you. I I do, but I want to make notes so that I don't forget.
Yeah. Go.
Okay, um, and I have read that the fire protection source and RID, well, the fire protection source is now the Green Valley, it's the next door neighbors.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, the applicant's looking to utilize the Grasslands subdivision, which is the adjacent subdivision to the south.
And does he have an agreement with Grasslands for that matter?
I understand there's an agreement. I don't know if that agreement has been executed yet, Commissioner. Again, the applicant might be able to proceed forward. That we haven't, because we haven't received a final plat application, we don't have all the documentation of the completion of conditions or how far he's proceeded.
So the answer is no. We don't have any documentation that the fire protection source and RID has been completed as part of the condition.
Correct, other than the indication from the applicant that he's made some progress on that.
I'm I, do you remember the comment that Commissioner Rolfe made earlier about the former applicant? We're not making those comments about this applicant. So if he tells us something, I want some verification as to the status. Okay, so is there a weed management plan in place?
Madam Chair, there is a weed management plan in place. Or madam commissioner, excuse me.
And weed free certification has been acquired?
Um, Mr. Chair Commissioners, yes.
And you have seen the document?
Uh, we have that for that five years, weed plan, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a preliminary engineering report and exaction for offsite road impacts?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, we have not seen the completion of that condition yet.
So that is not yet completed?
That we've been engaged in, no.
I'm what do you mean you have not been engaged?
So I'll I'll back up, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. In the completion of conditions of approval, typically that's something the applicant proceeds on their own. And through their final plat application, they submit documentation of the completion of each one of their conditions. And so we typically don't see the documentation of the completion of conditions until we get to final plat approval.
Okay, so I could put this in my questions for the applicant, is that correct?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's correct.
Mr. McNally, I'll jump in while she's writing. Essentially, um, the applicant is saying, I I have not completed all my conditions of approval. I'm asking for a little more time to do that. Is that that's correct, right? Is that essentially what this process is?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And seven years isn't enough? Oh, sorry, I withdraw that remark. Address assignments, mailboxes and utility installation, do you know if that has been taken care of?
Again, probably a better ask of the applicant at this time.
Well, and the payment of taxes.
Uh, payment of taxes is a condition that gets met typically right prior to filing the final plat. So that when we so.
Is this for our property taxes?
This is to make sure the property taxes are up to date at the time of creation of the property.
And you didn't go downstairs and ask about this?
It typically don't monitor that condition until uh, prior to its meeting, uh, prior to its plating, simply because that's when we need it. That that's when we need it to be met.
Okay.
Obviously, the requirement to pay taxes is a responsibility year to year of the property owner.
Absolutely.
But again, for the purposes of the final plat application and creating the parcels, we want the taxes to be paid. So those taxes uh, are are addressed prior to the property being divided further.
Do you know who Sanford and Son Auto is the entity?
I I don't know the particular individuals that are tied to the that organization.
I believe that entity is what paid the $200 fee for the extension. I'm not sure what the requirements are for having an interest in the enterprise, but it seems like it might be an important thing. For all we know, the mafia is paying this. Oh, I withdraw that remark. That's inappropriate. Um, okay. Back in 2015, there was an agreement signed um by Mr. Fosbender and the owners of lot one, two, three, four and five, um, in which Mr. Fosbender agreed to deed ownership of lot B, which encompasses the lake, boathouse, boat ramp, access, parking lot, water rights and easement to the well. He was going to um, deed that ownership over to the Waterski Mania Estates Homeowners Association for the sale price of $25,400. Do you know if that has happened?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh, the lot has not, that particular lot has not been created yet. So it wouldn't be able to allow it to be hap to occur.
Have the Waterski Mania Estates Homeowners Association signified that they're still willing to do that? I mean, 2015 is a lot of water under the bridge since then. And I would think Mr. Fosbender would want more money than $25,400. You know, it's almost 10 years ago. Do you know anything about the money in that?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I do not.
Okay. And of course, he can't have created an easement across lot C because lot C hasn't been created. Is that correct?
Ms. Chick, uh, that's correct. Or Ms. Chick Commissioner.
You mentioned that most of the cars are gone. Do you know where they went?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I do not know where all the cars have gone.
You know, I have had several phone calls and and verbal complaints about the um, all the cars that are now appearing at 46 City View Road. Are you familiar with any of that?
Um, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we are familiar with that property. Um, we are aware that there have been several cars moved onto that property.
When you say several, could you?
Quite a few, there's quite a few cars.
Like 50?
I couldn't tell you an exact number. There's a lot.
The neighbors have said there's a lot and and they're not happy. And I'm very concerned that we are merely moving this one portion of urban blight to another. And that does not make me comfortable looking out for the all the people in our community that have to deal with this every day. And I think we have one person who is possibly taking advantage of the situation. Do you know if Mr. Fosbender has a car dealership license for the sale of onsite vehicles?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I do not.
I'm looking at the, this is dated March 1st, 2019 from Michael Fosbender regarding um, an extension. This is his application for the extension request of that date. Um, and in it, he states that the conditions remaining requiring significant additional work are fire protection and DEQ approval. Um, so is the DEQ approval, is that still out there or I mean, do we still need to do that? Or because of the change in the law, it's not a problem?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, the DEQ approval remains a condition of approval for this project and still needs to be completed.
Okay, so we don't? Okay, so we don't know. Or it is not completed. That condition has not been.
We have not received an indication that we have. We don't have a D Q rule in hand for this project. No.
And have you? Do you have a document? Proving that we have. Evidence of fire protection for this subdivision?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, we do not yet have that proof. It has not been submitted yet.
I am looking at the discussion of the. And it this it turned out to be a seven year extension. And I've highlighted this part, the subject property. Specifically proposed lots number 6A, 6B and 6C. Has are being utilized heavily as vehicle storage. And I realize you that that has been. Addressed. Okay, and so. It's my understanding that the neighbors are still not happy. I have a letter from one of the neighbors that talks about. What was formerly a nice green area is now had dead cars all over it. And now it's it looks. It still maintains its. It looks like a junk car. Former vehicle camping site and there's dead grass and weeds and. When you were out there and looking at that, did it? Look like it was well kept?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, the property looks quite a bit different than when we originally gave it preliminary approval. Given the impact of a lot of the vehicles on the property.
So I have a document here. The extension request application from. Michael Fosbender. Assuring me that his. Engineer Ryan Cosney has stated that we can 100% have this all wrapped up by this summer. So worst case, all conditions completed by October 2023. And it is now. Middle of September 2024 and all these conditions still have not been met. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair Commissioners. That's correct. We have not verified all that the other conditions have been met.
So is this your fault? Because you haven't verified it? Or is it his fault because he hasn't gotten the job done?
We haven't received a final plot application demonstrating that all those conditions have been met.
Okay.
You take your time, Commissioner. Maybe I'll ask a question while you're doing that, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So Mr. McNally, just for those that might be watching or listening, just the process and kind of where we are. So. Once we approve. A subdivision preliminarily. Typically, we there's a three year timeframe where all of the. Items, the conditions of approval are, we hope that they're met. And then a final plot application will be submitted. And in that final plot application, that's where the applicant verifies that they've met all the conditions of approval. And or in some cases guaranteed them. And. If an applicant has not gotten to that point. In the three years, typically three years, we start with three years, they can ask for an extension. And sometimes they don't. They only need a year or six months, but. Sometimes we offer up to a three year extension again, depending on the circumstances and their progress toward completion of that. And so. In this case, there's been. This is which how many? Requests for extension have we had? And some of those at least one while we're up to. Seven years has been explained, but I think they've been different numbers. Time, right?
Mr. Chair, you're correct on all your statements. We received multiple extension requests for this project because we've granted them at various lengths.
Right, right.
As opposed to a standard three year extension or a typical three year extension like we would see sometimes.
I generally know all these answers. I'm just kind of having a discussion and for those that might be watching or like. Not quite understanding what the heck we're doing here today. So the applicant. Is saying I need a little more time to complete those conditions and. What the questions are stemming from is, you know, why, where, where are we in process? Why are we not complete? You explained a little bit there about the D E Q circumstances more recently. And then we've had the issue of the cars. So. You have more? Oh, go ahead.
And Mr. Chair, just to add a little bit more to what you're indicating here. When we give those preliminary approvals with those conditions. We the ball goes into the applicant's court to meet those conditions. We we help as necessary, some things we might have to review as they come in. And we might comment on those things to to complete those conditions. But typically, we do not see full evidence of completion of conditions of approval until the final plot application is made, which is required to contain all that information all in one package.
Right.
So.
So that's when we would, for example, if someone said, hey, I finished. Condition number X. That's when we would go and verify some degree either through an engineer stamp or onsite visit or whatever it might be, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair Commissioners, and that's given my vague answers to Commissioner Payne's questions about certain completions of certain conditions. Because again, we haven't got into that stage of our process where we begin to verify those completions of those conditions. So we are. Looking to the applicant and their and their. Indication in their application as to what they've done and what they haven't done in regard to completing their preliminary approval here.
Right, okay. Just a little bit about process. Commissioner, further questions? You have the floor again. You'd like.
Well. Moving on. I've been. Digging around. In our records. And. You know. So. And the. Vehicles that are the subject of at least part of my concern have been now moved over. Not far from the neighborhood where I live. I believe they have all been moved over to. Over on it's called City View. Sorry. And. So he was. It's March 16. Okay, the junk vehicle. It's formerly at 3930 Bowie Boulevard. There have been complaints about it since. June of 2021. The vehicles, and this is based on information that I. Went down and talked to. Jay Plant and Crystal Ness, who are county employees. Supposed to be looking after the best interests of our community. And. The vehicles have been moved over to 46 City View Road. Do you know who owns that property?
It is a relation to Mr. Fosbender. I believe it's his brother and his brother's wife at the time currently.
And do they have a? Car licensure? Do they have a license to sell used cars on on the premises?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'm not aware of what they have.
Okay, and these other. So the first complaint about these junk vehicles was received May 24th of 2022. And I have, I'm going to be asking Mr. Oh, let's see. Yes, Crystal Ness said that. You are aware that the vehicles have been relocated and that's brought up possible zoning violations. Are do you recall having that conversation?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, we are aware that that's that presents a possible zoning violation and action for the applicant to proceed forward to address that.
So. It it bothers my sense of. Good common sense problem solving to move. A bunch of vehicles, which I realize are personal property, but they're an eyesore to the neighbors. And. Possibly a. As their. Liquids drain into our ground, they become an issue for our groundwater and whether it is over in. In this area or over on. 46 City View Road, it is still a problem and it needs to be addressed. And it doesn't just impact Mr. Fosbender. It impacts those of us who live over there. So. I am not happy with Mr. Fosbender. I am not happy with kicking this can down the road. Seven, eight years, whatever it's been. And it just. We're supposed to be responsible property owners. I mean, we're all taxpayers in this community. We all live here. We love it. It's a beautiful place to live. My grandchildren live here. This is this is important and we have to be careful of what we are leaving out there. To be moldering down into the ground for future generations to figure out. And. That's what these cars look like to me over there on 46 City View Road. Okay, and I. I think I've asked. Greg enough questions.
Okay.
Move along.
Thank you. Any other questions? Make sure at this time. Mr. McNally, the applicant has asked for a one year extension. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, he's indicated his application is correct, that he can complete these conditions within one year.
Okay. And. I guess it's up to us to determine that timeframe, but we'll. We can talk about that. And any other questions at this time? We'll we'll. Offer Mr. Fosbender an opportunity to address the commission and answer questions if he's willing. Mr. Fosbender. Welcome. If you'd introduce yourself for the record, please.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, Mike Fosbender, 3930 Bowie Boulevard. Open to questions.
Okay.
Mr. Fosbender, could you address some of the issues that I just rained down upon Mr. McNally's head?
Sure. As far as the conditions of approval, we have met every single we're prepared to submit. Final plat on everything except for the D E Q approval and Frank Preschard's working on that right now. It should be submitted to D E Q within a week or two. That's what Ryan has told me.
Okay, and isn't that pretty much what you said back in March of 2019?
That and the cars and we were working on fire protection because at that time we were still considering doing a sump into the lake.
And. So you recognize there is an issue. Regarding so it seeps into the water and so if it's water ski water. You're concerned about that, but if it's my drinking water, you're not that concerned. It's okay?
I guess I don't understand your question. I. I'm concerned with water all across the valley. I've been through at least one D E Q inspection at. This location. And was found to be in compliance with all the junk vehicle laws. I'm not pardon not vehicles. They're not leaking fluids. It's if they. One of them seeping a little bit, we clean it up. It's not. We're not out there dumping fluids onto the ground at either location.
I'm aware that you do not dump it, but as cars. Age disintegrate. Their. Fluids which are in their. Transmission, you know, maybe it's not gasoline, maybe it's transmission oil, maybe it's gasoline, maybe it's air conditioning fluid. But as cars get old and rust out. So you have drained all of the liquid. Parts of these. Hundred cars before you move them? Is that what you're telling me?
No, I haven't. I drove them. They're they're all still drivables, so. And they're sealed up. They're not leaking fluids.
At this point, they are not leaking.
No, they're not. And.
And so if we let you go another eight years, maybe they will be leaking by then?
Very few of them stay for eight years. I'm selling. I sell a couple hundred cars every year, so this is an inventory that is rotating.
You have a. A used car dealership license?
I do.
Who owns the property at? 46 City View Road?
It's deeded to my brother and his wife.
Do they have a car dealership license?
They don't.
Are you selling cars off of that lot?
No. It's just storage and.
So those cars are just sitting up there waiting to molder away?
Their inventory waiting to be moved to my other shop to be fixed or moved.
Where's your other shop?
At on Canyon Ferry Road.
What's the address?
3252.
Are you aware that your brother? May have. Mobile homes on that lot and people are living in those mobile homes? As rentals?
Yes, I'm managing those rentals.
And. Is that? Is there any kind of licensure or? You know, approval from the health department or anything that needs to be. Addressed there?
For the mobiles? No, that was all done previously to. The purchase of the property.
Do they have septic tanks up there?
They do.
For each mobile home?
I don't know if there's one for each or if there's a couple of them are shared, but yeah, they're they're all served by septic in a while.
And have we sent our health department up there to check on that? You know?
It had to go through approval before any of those were. Put there. That was all done before. The purchase of the property.
Before the purchase of the.
Before my brother purchased the property. Yeah, all the D E Q sanitation requirements were all met by the previous owner to. Put the mobiles there.
I. How long have those mobile homes been there?
I don't know the exact. Timeframe, but it's been a long time.
Commissioner, I'm going to try and guide us back to the agenda item.
I'm sorry.
If we could, and item number 13 is a.
It is.
Consideration of the extension of preliminary subdivision approval for. Us in your mind.
And. Most of my. Concern is regarding his brand new and improved storage lot. Do you have a fence around that lot?
And Mr. Chair, I apologize, Commissioners, I haven't been properly addressing. Is it okay if we just?
Yeah, I'm giving you leeway just to have a have a question. She can ask as many questions as she wants, though I'd really like to focus on the agenda item if we can.
Okay, to answer the question, no, if as. Okay, to answer the question, no offense, fence hasn't been put up. We were prepared to do one. My, I had told you before I was gonna have one up. My fence installer, his dad got sick, ended up in hospice, passed away. So we were set to do it again this month. And then Greg let me know that there was possibly some zoning issues with the cars there, so I'm meeting with Greg and Crystal immediately following this meeting to discuss how we can proceed there.
What is Sanford and Son Auto?
That's the name of my used car dealership.
Okay. How long have you had that?
Uh, fifteen or twenty years. I don't know the exact date.
That's close enough. I mean, ten years here, ten years there. How many of these commissioners were here when you started down this road?
Commissioner Haas has been here for as long as I can remember.
Okay.
We've been through numerous things.
And it makes me wonder if some of the former commissioners may have had concerns and questions that you have been able to just wait it out and Commissioner Rolf and I just are not as uh fully informed as they were. You think that was a possibility?
I had no intention whatsoever of trying to wait out for different commissioners.
Okay. I have no more questions.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Mr. Rolf, any question?
No.
So, Mr. Fosbender, I'll just, um, when we go down this road, we approve a preliminary plat application. We're uh we're in it together. We're in the same boat. We we would like to see you finish the project. That's when we get to that point, we'd like to see it done and we'd like to see the uh uh final plat come forward. And um so as you you've, I'm sure caught on, there's a little bit of frustration around the length of time and um some of the details here. So all I will say, I won't I won't pile on or anything, but um I have a strong interest in getting this baby done, put to bed. And so um please complete the the uh requirements to to do that and we'll we'll get there together and we can we can move on. Um, a question for you, though, directly is that if you're saying a very soon application will be made to DEQ and I understand that, you know, the last six months delay because of the rules of DNRC and all of that. Do you need a year? Can we, will six months suffice? Can you get this?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I had asked Ryan to come this morning. He said he texted me right before the meeting. He's tied up with a sewer issue out here in Creek, I think. But we had discussed it. He texted me back just a bit ago. He said, six months for DEQ plus getting through the plat review would be next to impossible. He said one year is doable.
Okay, so.
We're gonna get it done as fast as we can. If we can get it, you know, he said typically right now DEQ will submit. They'll kick it back in fifty nine days.
Okay, that's how long they have to get.
Yeah, they have sixty days to respond, so at fifty nine they kick it back at, so then we just resubmit it. And then he said typically gets through the next one, but, you know, there's some unknowns there too dealing with DEQ DNRC.
And the reason I ask that, I don't want to put six months on you if we're gonna be doing this again.
Ryan said there's a.
I'm not.
There, he said there's a good chance we would be back here in six months, saying we're not quite through. But if we can get it through before then, we will and we'll submit final plat just as soon as we have that.
Okay, so the other part of that, though, if six months would light a fire under things, uh, we'd surely do that. But if it's unrealistic, then um I I I get that. So I just want to make sure, because we're in this together and we want to see this to to the end. And um obviously, um, we don't need to rehash, but Commissioner Payne covered a lot of frustration that I think is shared across. Um, well, some of it anyway is shared across some some all folks. But anyway, um, I know we were talking about um uh, last time we were talking about length of time in our last public meeting. And I I don't know if that's an issue, Commissioners, uh, again. And if anybody wants to talk about how long, from just what I just heard, that six months uh may end us right back here because of the DEQ process and not being able to get it done, that a year might be more realistic and in uh making sure that uh then a final plat application is submitted and all of that. Is that what I'm getting at, Mr. Fosbender?
Yes, Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you for the comments, but yeah, that's or and I we're, as far as the fire getting lit, we're, we have a fire lit on ours. We're trying to get this done ASAP.
I just thought of one other thing.
Please.
You know, we have, the laws have changed since in the last nine years. Um, and and I don't know if this has anything to do with the new zoning regulations. And I I know the zoning issue for the property up there on City View Drive. I believe Greg told you there was a zoning issue. But is there? I'm just saying, if you have to do this under rule of the law today, has it changed significantly since you first applied nine years ago?
Uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, the zoning has changed and I believe, I I haven't looked exactly. Greg could probably answer that, but I believe this is in the zoning area and to do a subdivision, I think they have to be ten acre minimum. So this, I mean, you couldn't do this under the current regulations. I don't, I could be wrong, but again.
You're talking about the subdivision on our screen, if you could do that today? Or are you talking about what he's doing up north?
No, I'm talking about this.
Okay.
Because here's, so and as I recall, the zoning for the ten acre lots, you can do smaller ones. If you can show, you've got a hydrogeologist swearing there's well, there's water for human consumption there and.
There's a planned development process that someone could go through.
And is that significantly more challenging than what we've got here today?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I have no idea. I haven't even discussed it with Ryan or.
Okay.
I didn't realize there was even exemption for if you could show water, which you can hit water with a shovel out there. There's ample groundwater and we just tested the wells too. We just got back samples again last week and they tested well.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Anything, Commissioner?
Question maybe for the uh legal staff. And I guess it's what's the before the commission right now is either to accept, to make an extension or deny it.
Right.
Uh, what what would be the ramifications of a denial at this point?
Um, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so as Mr. McNally spoke, the county does not have any review criteria presently in its subdivision regulations. It would be something in which this body would be able to articulate its decisions to deny a subdivision extension. So I'll also let the board know that, as far as I understand, the board has also never denied a subdivision extension. So there are certain, I guess, liabilities and risks out there for the county. Should the county choose to deny subdivision extension, again, without any review criteria in which to do that. So also applicants are entitled to know what's going to be expected of them. So without necessarily having a, well, if you don't, you know, if you're coming close to the deadline and these things aren't met, that's going to be an issue. You know, there isn't that kind of analysis that which the board can rely upon in making a decision. So uh, I can go further into some of those risks and liabilities if the commission would like.
If, I guess, I guess my question is if the is either given extension or you don't. If you don't, it looks like that puts Mr. Fa- uh Fossbender back to square one, reapplying for a whole new uh uh under the new new regulations. Is that right?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so legal questions and issues aside, the practical reality is then the subdivision, the subdivision approval, preliminary approval would expire. An applicant would have to reapply, correct? So that's the practical reality if a deny, if a board denies a subdivision extension. So that's the practical part. Again, back to your question about what are the risks? One, the county has never done this before, has not denied one. There aren't, there isn't any criteria in your subdivision regulations which to base that decision to deny the extension request. So I think we've heard on the record that at this point, there's seems to be just one more thing that the applicant needs to meet. And that is running through DEQ and DNRC. And certainly, I think statewide, we all understand the administrative backlog that has exist for the last couple of months about that. So there's examples of this happening in other jurisdictions. And counties have been sued for um under the subdivision and platting act for arbitrary and capricious decision making when it relates to decisions that aren't based in the regulations. And there's also been equal protection claims that have been brought because the applicants who ask for subdivision extension approvals are all similarly situated. So in this instance, you would have one individual who then did not get that extension request. And so what's the difference between this individual, the other individuals that have been able to get continued um extension requests granted? I would also note that under the statute that allows this to happen, it is a mutual agreed upon timeframe. So it sounds like we're talking about one year. Um, and I just know that if the board was gonna say we want to extend that beyond a year or go less than a year, that the applicant also has a say in that, it looks like.
I think there's a question over there. Oh, okay. I didn't know if you were done. You're done? Okay, Commissioner Payne, please.
Mr. Fossbender, you were up here six months ago, remember?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, yes, I was here six months ago.
And at that point, I think you may have picked up on the fact that I don't think that you are um playing by the rules and I would be perfectly happy denying your request for an extension. Do you remember me kind of intimating that six months ago?
Sure.
Did you see that as a warning?
I did, I guess, partially see it as, Mr. Chair Commissioner, yes, partially, uh. I could share some personal stuff is what has gone on in the last six months.
I guess all I was asking was you're aware of this situation.
And I've been trying to get this done and I've had a lot of things stuffed.
We all have problems, yes, I, we all have things.
Yes, we do.
Including your neighbors. And the neighbors are who call us and say, by golly, you better get something to. So we do have to listen to the other property owners and and their complaints. And we run into them in the grocery store or, you know, at the basketball game or where, and it's I I have taken a lot of heat about what the heck is going on out there. Um, and I recognize the legal ramifications. Oh, my God, we might get sued. You can sue a ham sandwich if you've got the um money to file your first complaint. It that does not terrify me terribly. Um, however, uh-oh, no, he's not the policeman. I just, um, the threat of a lawsuit this, it just doesn't terrify me the way it should. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, any other questions? Any other question?
Yeah, I ju- I uh, if I'm, if I might, Mr. Chair, I I really think we need to get this this thing wrapped up. Um. What's it gonna take to get this thing wrapped up in your mind?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, Ryan has everything that he needs from me to be able to finish this final plat. So all that we need is DEQ approval.
I think you also need a signed agreement from Grasslands about the water or the fire protection.
We we have that agreement, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we have that. It's already been approved by their board.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, and and you think that that six months might be a, might, there could be some things go wrong. You'd like to have a year.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I haven't been through a DEQ process for fifteen or twenty years. So I can't answer specifically, but Ryan does the, I mean, it's his job and he said six months would be nearly impossible. If we can get it done in six months, I'll be back here submitting final plat. Just as soon as we get that DEQ approval, we'll be in here submitting it.
Anything further?
Nothing more.
Any further question? Mr. Fosbender, anything else you'd like to?
Just thank you for your consideration.
Really appreciate you coming up and being willing to answer questions. Uh, Mr. McNally, anything else you'd like to add prior to asking for public comment?
Mr. Chair, no.
Is there any public comment? Any public comment on this item, any public comment? Okay, Commissioners, we have to don't have to, but uh, uh, we're encouraged, I'm encouraging us to make a decision here, so.
Would you like a motion?
We'd like a motion, please.
Um. Chairman, I move that we accept the staff recommendation to give our fellow citizen, Mr. Fossbender, another year to work on this project.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved in second to approve an agreement to extend preliminary subdivision approval for the Fossbender Minor Subdivision for one year. That, am I framing that correctly, Commissioner?
I believe that's, yep.
Okay, and then we have a second. Further discussion? Anything further?
Mi- Mr. Chair, I'd I'd just like to relay a little story to Mr. Fossbender. Um. When uh you and I were running against each other for the position I now hold, I was out on my, uh, bunch of the neighbors had had all been working in their yards and I, we met out on the on the sidewalk and uh we're having a beer. And they asked, and one of the neighbors asked me how the campaign was going. And the other neighbor said, well, who are you running against? And I mentioned your name. And the other neighbor said, well, isn't he the guy that has all the junk cars out there next to my friend's house? Boy, that's been tough on my friend. They 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 built a beautiful home out in this very nice neighborhood. He said, I'm gonna give you a donation. I don't think he should be a commi- commissioner. And the other and the other neighbor gave me a a donation that night as well. I think there's a lot of frustration out there about the way you've handled this. Uh, let's get it wrapped up and get it done. Um, and it's been going on for a long time. Uh, I I I want people to be able to have subdivisions. I want them to be able to to uh, I I want us to have more places for people to live in our community. And um this is unnecessary for it to go this long. Uh, please help us out.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner? Okay, and I've I've already made comment, Mr. Fosbender. I think we uh, yes, there's a strong interest in getting this wrapped up and um moving on to final plat. So please, let's get it there. All right, Commissioners, we have a motion of second on the floor. All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Oh.
I'm thinking about my eye. I'm I'm.
All in favor?
My nose.
There's two all in favor. Any others?
Okay, I'll do it.
All right, any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Mr. McNally. All right, next item on the agenda is a board appointment. Mr. Ballis.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is item number fourteen on the agenda for you to consider today. You have the backup memo in your packet. Uh, I'll read it into the record and as we've done in the past, we'll take them one at a time, Mr. Chair, if that's agreeable to you. These candidates meet the qualifications for consideration of each board. And again, there are three of you, three of them for you to consider today. The first one is the City County Parks Board. Alex Tomerup and Jerry Blythe have been serving on the board and both wish reappointment to a second term. No other applications were received. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider and select the candidates for the City County Parks Board to terms that will expire October. the candidates for the City County Parks Board to terms that will expire October one, two thousand and twenty seven, and Mr. Chair, if you'd like to take that on?
Yes. Yes, so let's take each one, uh, each item individually here, so this is the City County Parks Board. There are two uh, appointment opportunities and uh, their term would end twenty twenty, October one, twenty twenty seven. Commissioners, questions, concerns? Any public comment on these two proposed appointments? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the appointments as described.
Second.
Moving in second, approve, approve the proposed appointments to the City County Parks Board as described by Mr. Balt. Uh, further discussion, commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, Mr. Balt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The next item is for the Consolidated City and County Planning Board. Adrian Cotton and James Sontag have been serving on the board and both wish reapportment to a second term. No other applications were received. Action staff recommends the commissioners consider and select the candidates for the Consolidated City and County Planning Board to terms that will expire September one, two thousand and twenty seven.
Thank you, Mr. Balt. Commissioners, any questions about the Consolidated City County Planning Board potential appointments? Any public comment on these appointments, proposed appointments? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the um, appointments of the cons, Consolidated City and County Planning Board as explained by uh, Mr. Balt.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moving in second, approve the appointments as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you. All right, Mr. Balt.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the last item on, on this item for you is the Lewis and Clark County DUI Task Force. Um, there has been a vacancy on the board since May of two thousand and twenty three. Jay Nelson applied. Action staff recommends the commissioners consider the applicant and select the candidate for Lewis and Clark County DUI Task Force to a term that will expire December twenty one, December thirty one, two thousand and twenty five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balt. Any questions, Commissioner? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the appointment of Jay Nelson to the Lewis and Clark County DUI Task Force.
Second.
Moved in second to approve Mr. Nelson to the DUI Task Force as presented. Further discussion, commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. All right, we are at that time in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission but not on today's agenda. Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing no public comment, commissioners, thank you, we will stand adjourned.